Stand for. Stand for the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to thank everybody for being here today. This is Mahoney County Commissioners Hearing Room, regular meeting number twenty-four, Thursday, June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, ten a.m. And we called it work. Do we have any public comments at this time?
Hi. May I say?
In a minute, ma'am. Any public comments? Eric and Joanne? State your name and address.
Eric and Garrel, seven-one-two-seven Youngstown Pittsburgh Road, Poland, Ohio. I'm here twofold with my colleagues, both trustees and the police chief. So this isn't an I think, this is an actual public servant thing. The last five years, we've made great progress with the sheriff and everybody else working on trying to get Poland at one nine-one-one center. Everything has been positive. We made the proper steps. But there's never actually been a solution presented to us, and that solution may still be up in the air. But Austintown approached us and they took our fire, and they believed that they could potentially handle our police, which in turn would just create more safety for our residents and everybody else. We're just the first line of defense. We're the lowest form of government. We're nothing. I mean, but we take those calls, as you know, Mr. Ditzler. We take those calls. We're doing what we can control. We're just asking for help, and if it's a financial thing, we would just, you know, want your help. Because the reality of it is, it's just about our safety at this time, Mr. Trafficaddy. You live there. You have a mother. I have daughters. I got family. So it was presented to us, and we're just here to ask for help. That's it. And we thank you for all the help that we've already got.
Okay, thank you very much. Joanne?
Yes, I'm Joanne Wallis, also Poland Township trustee. On June the seventh, I attended the CAG meeting. I'm asking, you know, for this help to get, to have our police be dispatched by Austintown, where our fire district is. There was a lot of discussion about the history. There was discussion about EMD. There was discussion about finance, but the bottom line stays the same. The words emergency, hang on, or emergency wait, they just don't belong together. So we have a solution, and we are asking for your help. Now, the next CAG meeting is Tuesday, July twelfth, and they did say that they would take it to vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for comment. We appreciate that. Karen, do you have anything in response to that?
Good morning, Commissioners. We did have a productive CAG meeting with the board, which is appointed by yourselves and the trustees of the governments inside of the CAG. We hear Poland, odd and clear. We understand what they're asking. And there's a lot of logistics that comes with that type of move. Manpower, staffing, finances, moving of nine-one-one lines from which towers they hit to dispatch centers, as well as emergency medical dispatching training, which comes with that. A lot of logistics that the board has to work out to see if it's feasible and if we could do it. Ultimately, that would be great if we could logistically line up through the geographic areas of the county into P-SAFs, fire and police together. That's a long-term goal, and we're working toward it. We've taken a lot of steps. We're very proud of our council government, our radio system we have in Mahoney County. Where actually other areas of the state of Ohio are very envious of the radio system, the commissioners and the two townships that are in the council government's bill. Now it's just putting icing on the cake and getting to where Poland wants us to be, as well as the other governments want to be. With it comes the Board of Directors, round tabling and figuring out the logistics on how to get that done. So we ask for patience, and we'll get there.
And you'll keep us informed, is correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Audrey?
Real quick, Commissioners. I understand when we put together this CAG, it was a mutual agreement between the Mahoney County Sheriff's Office and Commissioners and Boardman and Austintown Township. Boardman and Austintown have the two basically state-of-the-art systems that we decided to invest in and become one-third owner or one-third part of that CAG, which the commissioners are. When we put everything together, Mahoney County at the time, when we closed our dispatch center, we divided up the agencies that we dispatched for, along with Mahoney County, and they equally went to both different dispatch centers, which is part of the CAG. There was basically a, what am I looking for? A... We had to do it when it came to the amount of calls that came in. How many calls does each agency have? How many calls that, you know, that come in? And we had to do it between dispatch centers, basically to make the load of work fair amongst everybody. It's not perfect, but it's not perfect.
Anywhere.
Pretty much anywhere. And we worked towards that. Now, two of the three commissioners came and met with us a couple of weeks ago, or what was it, the seventh? And we had a long discussion, because it isn't a discussion. The hurdles that are involved here can't be discussed within five minutes or a soundbite with the media or anything like that. We came this way over many years of involvement when it comes to our dispatch. And I would just ask that, and they left. I wasn't even sure if we were going to have a vote, but I don't have a problem having a vote. But they left with being told, here's what's happened, here's the history, here's the financial problems, here's the issues with the EMD dispatching. The biggest problem right now is hiring employees and staffing these dispatch centers, because they're losing employees, just like law enforcement is, just like medical is, just like all of these ambulance services going out of business. I can go on and on with the difficulty of hiring. But the bottom line is, is this something that we all want to move toward? Absolutely, absolutely. Is this something that do we want to dispatch for fire and everybody? Absolutely. That's the goal. But there's hurdles. There's other agencies that have dispatch centers that don't want to give up their dispatch centers. Our goal at the very beginning, obviously, was to have everybody dispatched by one entity, actually two entities, because you'd have a redundancy, a backup if something happened here. This other dispatch center could dispatch for everybody. So I don't think there's anybody, including the chiefs or the trustees, that wouldn't admit that they're dispatching us more efficient now and better. There were dead spots all over the county. We knew that by investing in this radio system and becoming part of this CAG, we knew that it was going to make that radio system ten times more powerful. There's no reception that's perfect with the radio system, but it became ten times better for everybody and made everybody safer. So I can't speak for Boardman and what Boardman is able to or unable to do. But I know there's manpower issues. There's additional training that needs there, and I'm not sure how long that's going to take. And I want to be fair to them, because we're only, I know they're coming here and they're talking to you, and they want you to get involved, but we're one-third of the vote, and their employees are their employees, and Austintown and Boardman have to handle that. Would I like to see this happen? Would I like to see everybody happy? Absolutely. That was our goal, you know? Increase prices and cost, increase prices and systems. We all know that we went to the Spielman system that's owned by Motorola. We had some issues with that. Now it's, it's great. Everybody's happy. But there's a lot of moving parts here, and it's not just as simple as, oh, we'd like to be dispatched here. They shopped around for their emergency medical, decided to go with us, and I understand why they did, because it's a good system. And hopefully down the road, we can make them happy. That's what we want. There's a lot of moving parts, and it isn't as simple as just coming in and going, hey, can we have this? Because I represent the entire county, and Poland happens to be within that county, and I want to do the best for them that we can too. But sometimes there's a lot of obstacles, which we all know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Chief, would you like to say something?
The one thing I'd like to add to that is I want to thank the sheriff and the chiefs from Boardman and Austintown. I know they took on the dispatching center. I know they've done a really great job. I've been in law enforcement in this area for over thirty years. Been with on the county system for almost all of that time. I know what the system used to be like. Now it's ten times better than it ever was. However, again, we're here today. We're coming to you, asking you for any assistance that you can give us, not only for Poland Township Police, but also Poland Village Police. I've spoken to the chief from Poland Village. He is on board with us as well, having both police departments and the fire department all at one center. So I would just appreciate you guys looking into that for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Audrey, did you have a comment?
I just want to say, I was at the CAG meeting also with the sheriff and everyone that wasn't present at the time. And one of the things I want to make clear is that the commissioners have been very supportive of the Board of CAG when there's a need. And once they do the evaluation, they do come back to the board, and they say that. And the board has worked with them through all of that, and there's never been a funding no for the CAG. But they also take the recommendations of the chiefs and the board that is there. That's why they're in place for that. They will come back with that recommendation, as what we said to Poland Township, that the CAG will make a recommendation if there's a need or something else from that recommendation, then they will come back to the board and address it at that point in time. I think that it was a good meeting with the CAG. They're hearing what everything does. The board stepped up last year, a couple of years.
Couple of years.
When the fire came and said, in order for us to get on the system, at least, we'll be here and we'll hold here until we can completely get where we need to be. And the board agreed with that. They worked with that. They provided the funding, so that could be happened. So at least they would be on the radio system and didn't have to go out to another system. So I say that the board has been very proactive with the CAG and making sure that things are being done.
And in a perfect world, we would like a full system as well. I mean, that down the road is something that I've been saying probably for many years. But in doing that, it takes step by step. And I think right now, everybody is just, everybody looked at what we're doing and likes what's happening. And I think they also would like to see something as a total system come into play. But in doing that, it takes a lot of money and a lot of hours of trying to put it together. So patience with us. We have not heard, other than this, we have not been, anything has not been brought to us as of yet with this. And I'm sure when everything gets in order, Major Captain Bianca and the sheriff will bring those to us after the meeting in July. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So.
Sure.
No, I just wanted to add that, you know, I was part of township, you know, in Austintown, when we merged Austintown and Work. You know, that was one of my projects, was actually to merge Austintown and Work in camp, you know, as a trustee. And believe me, you know, I have nothing but respect for everyone, the township government, you know, because you guys work very hard every day, you know, boots on the ground, you know, addressing the people. And quite honestly, I think the three of us look at it the same way, you know, when we represent from the county standpoint. And I'm a big advocate of the merger and the nine-one-one. We turned nine-one-one over to the sheriff. The sheriff and Major Captain Bianca have done a phenomenal job in keeping this all cohesive. And, you know, we've pursued the CAG, because ten years ago, when we, when this board, you know, got together for the first time, we, we had dead zones, where police officers were in buildings, losing contact, losing communications. I mean, I can't tell you how many times that we were on towers, you know, trying to put repeaters and upgrades and different things in different parts of the county to try and make sure that that evolved, you know, to where we're at today. And right now, I think that we all see it. We're facing, you know, a huge problem with ambulances, and we're trying to, you know, address something with respect to that from countywide. But, you know, the nine-one-one service, obviously, you know, is something that we work on. The CAG works on daily, you know, between Boardman, Austintown and Sheriff's Department. You know, I can't compliment them enough on where we've progressed to. Like the sheriff said, is it, is it quick enough, soon enough? Never, you know? But, you know, obviously, that will, this portal will do everything in our power to make sure that we accommodate everyone. And your, you know, and your needs, so.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care of yourselves. Stay safe. All right, do we have any other public comments? Terry?
Can I sit here?
Yeah, just state your name.
Terrence Asarco, Level Boardman. When I read about the Milton Township Water District, Youngstown might be, is interested in buying it. It's under my understanding that Youngstown can annex that part of the area if they, if they provide water. How true is that? I mean, if it's the truth, people in Jackson Milton Township Water District better watch who they sell it to. If Youngstown can annex that area, it'll be a sorry day.
Thank you, Terry. Appreciate that comment. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to begin the meeting. Approval of the previous minutes of board meeting number twenty-three, Thursday, June ninth, twenty-twenty-two, and approval of bills for payment.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Trafficaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedio Agati?
Yes. Journal entries, number one. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved. Journal entries, number two. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Trafficaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedio Agati?
Yes. Number two agreements, A Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Holly. This is an agreement with Travel Host Magazine for advertising services in their Bridgestone PGA Golf Special Publication for twenty-twenty-two in the amount of one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, non-general.
Thank you. B County Courts. Anyone here? Jimmy, do you want to take that?
Okay. The county courts, the lease agreement was up. This is Boardman Court. We negotiated an additional five years. The judge is part of helping with paying the cost of the lease agreement. And we're here today to renew the lease, so we don't get into month-to-month additional charges for holding over.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy. C through G Engineers. Pat?
Commissioners, letter C is an agreement with Vita Freight Liner for repairs to vehicle number fifty-eight in the amount of two thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars, twenty-five cents. These are non-general funds. Letter D is an agreement with Commercial Truck and Trailer for additional repairs to vehicle number fifty-eight in the amount of a hundred eighty, a hundred ninety-eight dollars, also non-general funds. Letter E is an agreement with Environmental Design Group. This is for construction administration inspection services on the Phase One South Avenue Millenfield Project in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars. This is non-general funds and eighty percent ODOT-funded. Letter F is in it, is another agreement with Environmental Design Group. This is for construction administration inspection on South Avenue Phase Two Millenfield in the amount of one hundred three thousand, seven hundred three dollars, non-general funds. And letter G is an agreement with DLZ Ohio for construction administration inspection on the Mahoney County Road twelve. This is various federal aid projects that are funded through CEAO in the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand, sixty-four dollars, and these are also non-general funds.
Okay, thanks, Pat. H and I, Jobs and Family Services. Audrey? Or? Audrey? Audrey, are you on? Hi, Pat. Are you Audrey?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am, Commissioner. I do apologize. We got new laugh. Sorry about that. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Nancy. I mean, good morning, Audrey. Good morning, Holly. Letter H, Job and Family Services. This is an amendment number two with YMCA of Youngstown to replace exhibits, one and two, and no change in the amount of three hundred fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars and one cent. Letter I, Job and Family Service Amendment, number one, with the sheriff's office to replace budget and page one for CSEA for decontract non-general.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
J, sanitary? Pat?
Commissioners, letter J is an agreement with W Quicksol Associates to provide professional engineering services for the Camel wastewater treatment plant, replacement of the blowers and diffusers. This is improvement number five thirty-five, and the estimated amount is twenty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars, and these are non-general funds.
Thanks, Pat. Number two agreements, A through J. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved agreements.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Trafficaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedio Agati?
Yes. Number one, Resolutions additions. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved. Resolution is number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Trafficaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedio Agati?
Yes. Number two, Record of Bids Engineers. Pat?
Commissioners, letter A is our traffic signal maintenance.
Okay, thank you. It was like, looked like it was leading up to something else. Number two, Record of Bids, A. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved Record of Bids. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Trafficaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedio Agati?
Yes. Number three, Resolution of Awards, A, Engineers.
Commissioners, this is the award of the Mahoney County Road twelve paving project that was mentioned earlier with the construction inspection. This was rebid, and the low bidder was Corilla Contractors in the amount of three million, forty-nine thousand, six hundred seventeen dollars. This is non-general low bid, eighty percent ODOT CEAO funding.
Okay, thank you. Number three, Resolution of Awards, A. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved Resolution of Awards. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Trafficaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler? Commissioner Remedio Agati?
Yes. Number four, Resolutions Engineers. Pat?
Commissioners, letter A is a resolution declaring it necessary to commence litigation concerning property damage to Mahoney County Road. This occurred in Smith Township, and the road repairs needed to be done. So we have to go after the person that caused them to reimburse us for that damage.
Okay, thank you. B, Jobs and Family Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to read it in for, on behalf of Audrey. This is a resolution to approve and to extend an unpaid leave of absence for a job and family services employee. Thank you.
C, Law Library Susan?
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Holly. This is the resolution approving the Mahoney County Law Library Resources Board enter into a three-year agreement with West for patron access in the estimated amount of five thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars per month.
Okay, thank you. And D, OMB Grants Prosecutors. Anna, do you want to take that?
Commissioners, this is a resolution in support of the grant application with the State of Ohio Attorney General's Office for Victims of Crime in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Eighty percent is supplied by the Attorney General's Office and twenty percent is a cash match provided by the Prosecutor's Office. And also in combination with this, application is an application for State Victims Assistance Act in the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars with no cash back.
Okay, thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Number four, Resolutions, A through D. Do I hear a motion?
Motion approved resolutions.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Trafficaddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedio Agati?
Yes. That concludes our business portion of the meeting, and we'd like to introduce to you now one of our interns, David Sette. And David, do you want to say a few words on the few first couple days or weeks of... Yeah, come up to the podium.
There you go.
There you go. Now, we're going to quiz you later. I'm joking.
Dave Sette, I'm currently seventeen years old, and I'm upcoming senior at Kentwood High School. Honestly, I work with the Commissioner's Office. I am, I piqued my interest doing this after I completed my AP Gov class, and I really was interested in understanding of government. That's why I took summer internship. It's my second week here.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to Florida Health and work a little bit there, too.
And that would be good, because your dad is in the Navy.
Yeah.
And what is your career path?
I'm very interested in pre-med.
Good.
Yeah. Biology.
Good for you. Maybe you'll be a cancer researcher, finding some curse for these terrible illness.
Yeah.
I hope.
Thank you for you.
Thank you. That's, that's the way to go.
And just in a short time, you're very smart, you're very efficient. And you get a lot of work done in a short amount of time. You see all the gathering of data that you got for our on-rating, different information and stuff. So it's all good. It's nice to see good young people taking interest in, you know, and just putting everything together. So it gives you a little perspective on everything, so we appreciate your work.
I want you to stay in town, too. You've got Roots Town Medical School, and you've got YSHU has a great biology department. You can get them classes knocked out real quick and pick and choose where you want to go.
Good deal. Come back and take care of these two, because they're really going to need it.
I'll tell you. I need it now.
He does. You want to take it?
I needed it ten years ago.
Oh, God, his father would give him, and it's easy. That'll put you out for a while.
He did. Yes, he did for my Oboe.
I know. He put Frank out a couple of times. Well, I don't mean it that way. Well, that concludes the meeting. I mean, does anybody have anything they want to add? Anthony?
Well, I do want something I want to say.
Okay.
The Feast of Saint Anthony, I got to go that night. Carol was working her butt off. I mean, I don't know how they do what they do down there at the church. But they had more food than you would ever want to know and eat, and I did my share of eating and donating. And then the procession was very nice. I actually watched about a half hour of it, where they walked outside and they had a mass. And it was really, really nice. And Carol, I tell you what, you guys have a great system down there, the pizza, the sausage, the covatels, the desserts. I mean, I could go on and on. It was amazing job you and your family do down there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I enjoyed it. Thanks for having me.
All food-related.
Yes.
Anything we do in Bri Hills, food-related. Well, exactly. But we were at, we were at the Elder Abuse that Krishve had. And Audrey, you, of course, are the director there. And I'll tell you what, as usual, it was a great event, and Dr. Banks was fabulous. I was a little late, but everything worked out well. And the awareness, I mean, what we need to recognize in the valley is this, this is part of a pandemic with elder abuse, and it goes unseen. Because the elder people, seniors that are in their own homes, do not report. And it's, it's just terrible when you, when you think about who's actually a part of that, whether it's financial abuse, physical abuse, mental abuse that's going on. And not only in the homes, I mean, you have that in some of the living areas, living areas that are out there as well. So you do a great job. Krishve does a great job, and Lenora, a great team, along with the Direction Home, who's always been a partner. It's just a great group of our individuals that work for our seniors. And Krishve will be bringing this up with you, Audrey, and also Cassandra Valentini. The big event will be at the Cavelli Center. We've secured the Cavelli Center for a date in August, and it'll be very, it'll be a great event for our seniors. And I'm excited about that, because it's going to be wraparound for everything. So. You know more about that probably than I do.
And Carol, we'd like to thank you and the Commissioners for the great job that you do supporting us on elder abuse and with adult protection services. So we applaud you guys, too, because without the support, we would not be where we are today. So just want to say thank you to the three of you as well.
Thank you. Dave, Anthony?
Yeah, no, I was really happy that I attended the presentation yesterday at Collins Riverside Gardens. It's always nice to go there. It's such an amazing venue, and, you know, the people do a great job. And everyone that was involved yesterday really did an amazing job to present and all of the awards that were given out. You know, I... You know, I, I really appreciated listening to Dr. Banks. You know, I, I've met her probably 30 years ago in the valley. And being able to see her and hear her story, you know, that her mother's 104 years old and lives by herself in North Carolina. You know, it's just an amazing, amazing thing. And that seven of her siblings are also doctors. I mean, I'm, I'm just blown away. I mean, that's, that's pretty, pretty impressive. And, and Sarah Brown did a phenomenal job introducing her and talking about her, her past and, you know, and their friendship and things. And, and it was nice. And really Krishveen, she, she does a great job. You know, the more I get to see her in action, the more I appreciate the job she's done. And I got to go up and, and hold her. Her left side had sciatica, my right side had sciatica. So I got her arm, she got mine, and we held each other up for about 10 minutes during the presentation. But it was, it was very nice. But, you know, the whole event and the whole reason behind it was to make sure that we're aware of the elder abuse. And, and the things that Dr. Banks said and the things that Carol was alluding to are so true, because, you know, we think that the abuse is just physical. And, you know, there's mental abuse, there's financial abuse, there's, you know, people taking advantage of other people that don't have the ability to, to stop them, because, like they said, they're, they're caregivers for them. It may be your family, it may be your children, it may be, you know, your parents. You know, you never know who it is that is, that is, you know, taking advantage of the person that is in a vulnerable position. So, you know, I know that Cassandra Valentini from Direction Home and so many other people, you know, they, they, their livelihood is, is predicated around, you know, like Alms Budsmann and things of that nature to make sure that people aren't abused. So, so many different people were there, that different agencies that, we're very proud that Mahone County has the clientele that we do have and the professionalism and the agencies that take care of so many of our elderly.
Okay, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn, second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Traficanny?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Commissioner Remedia Rogetti?
Yes. Next meeting Thursday, June 23, 2022, 10 a.m.